Good evening. I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to our next item, and that's an action item. It's recommended that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meeting Act, probable or imminent litigation against, affecting, or on behalf of the public body, security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, threatened, or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Trickster liver. Change up your adult beverages. Different ones. Don't drink the same thing every day.
Good evening. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. And before we begin our recognitions, I would like to read our mission statement just as a reminder to everyone of why we're here. Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. So, good evening, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Small.
Thank you. Tonight, Assistant Superintendent Josh Shoemaker, as well as Board President Anna Klimkowitz, will join us in introducing our National Merit Scholars today.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Small, administrators, parents, students, principals. For more than 60 years, the National Merit Scholarship Program has been recognizing and honoring our country's most academically talented students. It is my pleasure to introduce a group of District 211 students from the class of 2024 who have distinguished themselves as National Merit Scholars. The National Merit Scholarship Competition begins in October of a student's junior year in high school. Students from around the country complete the preliminary scholastic aptitude test, commonly called the PSAT, along with approximately 1.6 million other American high school students. Based on the performance on that assessment, approximately 16,000 students from across the country received recognition from the College Board as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. The District 211 students with us this evening qualified as semifinalists and are among the top 1% of all students in the United States this year. Tonight, we recognize each student's accomplishment by presenting them with the District 211 Robert Creek Excellence Award. This award is named in honor of Robert Creek, who served District 211 as a board member for 20 years, 19 of those years as the board president. Mr. Creek distinguished himself by promoting a consistent vision of student and teacher excellence in District 211. I would like to ask that our board president, Ms. Anna Klimkowitz, join me at the podium to present the award to these outstanding students. I also ask that the parents of each scholar stand and be recognized, as I call your student, to come forward and receive the Robert Creek Medal. As you can imagine, these students are highly involved in our schools and communities. Some students were unable to join us tonight due to other engagements or responsibilities. I am, however, pleased to introduce the following students. From Palatine High School, Isaac Menin. Aiden Smith. From Fremd High School, Pranav Aier. Thomas Applebaum. Thomas Border. Evan Carl. Aditya Gupta. Joseph Cheng. Grace Lee. Arnav Mandal. Levin Mathew. Jacob Myers. Liam Nance. Henry Oh. Pranav Sinta Kumar. Stephanie Tian. Catherine Way. Jack Chu. From Conant High School, Anvith Kottham. Aiden Meashack. And from Hoffman Estates High School, Priyanshu Cha. Yashis Matur. Devanshu Pandya. Aditya Ramen. And if we could have one more round of applause for the scholars as a group.
Students, if you could work your way back around. Of the nearly 2 million college-bound students who take the ACT each year, fewer than 2/10 of 1% earn a top score. We have one of them with us tonight. It is my pleasure to introduce Counselor of Hoffman Estates High School Sabrina Brayton, who will introduce us to an outstanding student with a perfect ACT score.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Brayton, and I'm a school counselor at Hoffman Estates High School. I am very pleased to honor Yashis Matur for getting a perfect score of a 36 on his ACT. Come on up, Yashis. Truly amazing. In my 25 years as a school counselor, I've never met someone as talented and gifted as Yashis. He is by far the top student I have ever had, and trust me, I've had a lot. Not only did he get a perfect ACT score, but he also excels out of the academic arena. He is captain of four clubs at Hoffman: Scholastic Bowl, the math team, Science Bowl, and Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering Program. And he spent the last two summers conducting research to help others. Yashis spent the summer of 2022 conducting a data science study at the University of Illinois at Chicago analyzing air pollution. Then, into the summer of 2023, he was accepted to do an internship at Fermilab to research Miyan's pol-- I'm going to get this wrong-- Miyan's pollution-detecting abilities. I don't even know what that is, but I'm sure he could tell you sometime. Only 3% of those that applied for an internship at Fermilab got in. That's amazing. That itself is an accomplishment. Yashis is applying to many highly selective schools to study computer science, and I'm sure with his perfect score of an ACT of 36 and his many other accomplishments, he'll be well on his way to achieve whatever he sets his mind to. Please help me in giving him a round of applause. Congratulations, Yashis.
Hoffman Estates High School art teacher, Michaela Leno, has been named the 2023 Early Professional Art Educator of the Year by the Illinois Art Education Association. This award recognizes the top art-designed and media educators in the state for their excellence in service to the field. Michaela's professional performance, service, and leadership were marked exemplary in every regard, making her a clear choice for this recognition. Michaela joined District 211 in 2020 and split her time between Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, and Conant High Schools before joining Hoffman Estates full-time. She also spent six years as a lead teacher with Arts Alive, creating art camp curriculums for children ages 3 to 12. Michaela, who is inspired by her own high school art teacher to pursue teaching, comes from a family of art teachers. She teaches various art classes at Hoffman Estates and is a photographer club advisor. Congratulations, Michaela, and we are so proud to have you inspiring our students. This is always the wonderful part of our recognition of our students and our staff. Thank you to our students, and congratulations on your accomplishments. Thank you for everything you do for your schools. It's absolutely tremendous. What you young people do and your accomplishments are truly supported by our staff, and we can see it here with your parents. They're here supporting you also. So, thank you again for all that you do too for our students. And congratulations to Michaela on the recognition of the Professional Art Teacher of the Year. That is just amazing. And art is just such so wonderful. We need all of the different art programs, whether it's the music, whether it's the drawings, whether it's sculpting, any of those things. So, that's a wonderful way to help all of our people with just feeling good about themselves. So, I thank you very much for being here. Before we let you go and continue with our meeting, we do want to take some pictures. So, we'll probably start with Michaela then, and then we'll do our students. So, our students are going to come up here, we'll take pictures, and then within a couple of minutes, then we'll resume our meeting. All right. Our next item on the agenda is public comments, and the board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important to know that this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record, though not required. You may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. We have two people that are signed up to speak. First is Joyce Slavic, followed by Kathy Riesberg. Joyce?
Thank you. It's always an honor to follow all those amazing students and teachers. My name is Joyce Slavic. I am a parent in the district. This November, there is an IASB resolution for legislation to provide funding to school districts for school resource officers. I ask that you do not adopt this, that you do not promote that. If we want to make our schools safer, we should be asking for more funding for mental health resources, mental health programs, and mental health professionals. Focus on preventing gun violence, not reacting to it. I also see in the safety and security update for today's D-211 meeting notes a comment about police reviewing whether or not there should be even more SROs in our schools. Of course, the police will make the case, but it doesn't make our schools safer. It may make it more stressful and less safe for all students and staff, and especially students of color to see guns in our schools. Consider Parkland, Uvalde, Santa Fe, Texas, Kentucky Marshall County High School, and on and on. In a study published earlier this year in the Journal of Policy Analysis and Management, it found that the presence of school resource officers had mixed results for schools and changed the school environments and student outcomes in important ways. They found that SROs may reduce some forms of violence in schools, like threats and physical attacks without weapons, but don't prevent shootings. In fact, firearm-related offenses often increased after the hiring of an SRO. The presence of SROs can increase the use of suspension, expulsion, arrests, and referrals to police, particularly for Black students, boys, and students with disabilities, according to this research. We've seen that happen even in our district with the ProPublica and Chicago Tribune exposé, showing that kids of color and kids with disability had a disproportionate number of police tickets referred by school. I welcome collaboration with community organizations to help curb gun violence and other violence in our community, including the police. I would also like to see us come up with our own communications and plans. We have great free resources with Be Smart, which has materials for schools and can provide a district-wide video in-person presentation on safe gun storage, as well as resources. The focus should be on prevention and include mental health training and resources, anti-bullying or social inclusion campaigns, and better threat assessments to catch or mitigate the warning signs that often precede a mass shooting or suicides. I would also request a follow-up from Dr. Small on the status of our communications on gun safety and the free gun locks communications to our parents and our guardians. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Riesberg?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riesberg, and as a taxpayer for over 45 years in this community, I want to thank you, the board, for providing all students with a sense of equity, inclusion, and the freedom to learn. And I wanted to share that I truly appreciate the fact that so many folks who have spoken here in this room this past year are united with the majority of people in this community in their desire to take a stand against hate, against book bans, and against gun violence, and are also united in taking a stand for the safe storage of all weapons owned in this community. So, that is why I also wanted to thank all of you on the board for reaching a consensus on July 20, 2023, that was, according to the minutes of that meeting, supported by all members to discuss and potentially partner with local law enforcement to communicate gun storage. Your decision to do this is the first step in addressing the public health epidemic of gun violence. And the fact that you are now partnering with our local police departments to promote the availability of gun locks that are free to the public will definitely help the community to clearly see that you are intent on ensuring the safety and security of staff, students, and visitors. And also, since October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, for the 1 in 3 women in this community and the 1 in 4 men who are victims and survivors of domestic violence, this effort on your part to promote gun locks will save countless families from experiencing the tragedy of gun injuries and from having a loved one's life taken by gun violence in their own home. Thank you.
Thank you. That will take us to our next item, and that's the 2023 tax levy presentation. Tonight's presentation will review the recommended levy amount and the timeline of the action needed for this levy. The levy amount, which will be determined by the board at the November 9 board meeting, will represent the majority of fiscal year 24's financial revenue and will also directly impact each year of the long-term financial forecast. Therefore, in tonight's presentation, the projected impact on future years is also presented. As our reserves, fund balances, get closer to the 33% minimum, it is important to see how immediate decisions potentially affect the future stability of the district to continue to offer quality programs as expected and capital projects as planned without issuing debt. Tonight's levy amount recommendation is 5% plus new property growth, which is estimated at 0.3%. This recommendation allows for the continued high-quality educational programming, long-term financial stability of future students, employees, and community members without the immediate need for the additional tax burden of additional debt levy. This plan also includes funding for planned capital and life safety projects without incurring additional debt and other financial assumptions that are detailed in the presentation and the informational report that is listed not only under this agenda item but also under the unfinished business agenda item. Lauren Hummel, Chief Operating Officer, and Barb Peterson, Controller and Treasurer, will be presenting us some of the details of this levy recommendation.
Thank you, and good evening. Barb and I are pleased to share additional information on the 2023 levy with you all this evening. Tonight's presentation will include background information to better understand the tax levy process, a recommendation for the 2023 levy amount, and information that provides a foundation in support of our recommendation. Because the levy serves as the financial foundation for all future years, we will conclude our presentation with the district's long-term financial forecast. So, let's begin with some background information on the levy process. The tax levy is one of the most important financial decisions that the Board of Education makes each year, as tax revenue comprises more than 80% of the district's annual revenue. In order to maintain financial stability, we continuously monitor our largest source of revenue to ensure that it provides funding for our largest source of expense, salaries and benefits. In order to maintain a balance between tax income and salaries and benefits for the district, it is critical that the tax levy be reviewed in both the short and long term to ensure that the district maintains adequate revenue to sustain expenses both now and into the future. It is critical that we take more than a one-year look at the levy, as it is shortsighted to assess the financial relationship between these two variables. The levy process in Cook County is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, often referred to as PTEL or the Tax Cap. The Tax Cap rule was implemented to establish a cap on the amount that taxing bodies may levy each year. This cap is equal to the lesser amount of either the Consumer Price Index from the prior year or 5%. The Tax Cap allows for new construction growth to be levied for in the year in which it is added to the tax rolls. For the current year, the rate of CPI was 6.5%, which exceeds the Tax Cap limitation, so 5% will be used as a limiting rate for the 2023 levy. Due to the Tax Cap formula, the current levy amount will serve as the baseline for calculating the Tax Cap limit for the following year. More simply put, the 2023 levy amount will be limited to an increase of 5% plus new property growth. For District 211, new property growth is estimated at 0.3%, making the PTEL limitation 5.3% increase over the prior year levy extension. It's important to note that the budget and levy cycles overlap. Last year's rate of CPIU is used to set the levy limitation, or in this case, 5%, for the current year, and will be used in developing next year's budget. As illustrated on this side, and for further clarification of the sequence, the 2022 CPI sets the limit for the 2023 levy, which will impact the '24-'25 budget. The sequence of years, '22, '23, '24, '25, is a helpful pattern to reference when considering the various components driving the levy in the budget sequence. While we will focus the remainder of the information shared this evening on the levy recommendation, I did want to briefly take some time to provide information on the connection of the levy to the individual property owner's tax bill. It's common that we hear questions inquiring how the district levy impacts local property tax bills. There are five independent variables that are used in calculating a property tax bill. Of the five components, only the tax rate is determined in part by the local taxing body. The remaining four factors are controlled by outside agencies, including the Cook County Assessor, the Illinois Department of Revenue, and the Cook County Treasurer. It's important, or it's common for property tax bills to change at disproportionate rates from the amount that's limited under the Tax Cap, and oftentimes even disproportionately from one's neighbor because the five factors change at varying rates. For example, even if the district levied a flat levy, 0% increase, changes in other variables could result in more or less money being paid directly to District 211 on a particular tax bill. Despite the varying changes in individual tax bills, each taxing body is limited to a levy extension that is subject to PTEL and will not collect more than is allowed under the levy limitation. As Lauren previously mentioned, setting the levy amount is one of the most important decisions you will make as board members. We have considered many factors in making a recommendation to you this evening, including how this levy will impact next year and all future years to come. District 211 is not immune to the effects of inflation. Last year inflation was 6.5% and continues to rise. We are experiencing these cost increases in many categories of our expenses. Salaries and benefits represent 85% of our total expenses. We are seeing increases of over 7% so far this year in salaries due to competitive market conditions, increased staffing for security personnel, and English. market conditions, increased staffing for security personnel and English learner staff, and filling previously vacant positions due to the labor shortages. In twenty twenty-two, salaries increased six percent over the prior year. Benefits are also trending at a high rate, over five percent for the second year in a row, and are protected to continue at this rate of growth. We also took into consideration where we feel some of our other revenue sources are heading. Corporate personal property taxes are at a historically high rate, but we have been given notice that these are on the decline. And while we are enjoying the benefits of high interest rates right now, we know that these won't last forever. We don't foresee new revenue sources to replace these earnings losses. We consider that we are operating debt-free and asked ourselves, do we want this to continue? And yes, of course, as our strategic plan says, yes, we do. And finally, we consider the impact of this levy recommendation will have not only on next year but on future years to come for the stability of our district in the long term. All of these factors led us in the same direction. We are recommending a levy of two hundred and sixty-four point six million dollars, a five point three percent increase over the prior year. This consists of a five percent increase to existing taxpayers and point three percent of new property growth. On this slide, we also break out the levy recommendation by fund, and as you can see, we continue not to levy into either the IMRF Fund or the Working Cash Fund due to significant insufficient reserves in those funds. A second component to the levy recommendation is the recapture levy, and for a third year in a row, we will recommend to fully abate this levy. The amount of this levy for twenty twenty-three will be released next month. Cook County automatically adds a three percent loss factor to all levies filed to account for uncollectible accounts, meaning property owners who just don't pay their taxes. Last year, the board waived the application of this loss factor. This waiver stays in place until it is reinstated by resolution. We are recommending that it be reinstated. Let me explain by example how this works. When you waive the loss factor, Cook County will extend exactly the levy you filed and not a penny more. If you file a one percent increase in your levy, your levy extension will reflect only a one percent increase. But if you don't waive the loss factor, Cook County will automatically add three percent to your levy, not to exceed the tax cap. Under these circumstances, filing a one percent levy would result in a four percent increase to your levy, as long as four percent is below the tax cap. Last year, the board passed a levy below the tax cap and waived the loss factor to ensure that taxpayers were only levied at the amount of the levy that we filed. This year, we are recommending that this loss factor be reestablished to allow us to capture any funds lost due to delinquencies up to the limit of the tax cap. So what is the impact of limiting, of levying at the PTEL limit? Well, it will allow us to continue our high-quality educational programming and extracurricular activities. It will also allow us to operate debt-free while still funding our capital and life safety projects with our reserves. It will allow for continued stability of the district for our students, faculty, community, and future Board of Education. This does, of course, come at a cost. We estimate the cost to the average homeowner to be an increase in property taxes of a hundred and sixty dollars. While the district levies a determined amount each year, we do not receive the full amount of property taxes that were levied. Previously, I talked about losses that were due to homeowners or businesses who did not pay their taxes. Now I want to talk about property owners who receive refunds on the taxes that they paid. The chart on this slide represents the amount of property tax refunds that are issued against the district's property tax collections each year. Property tax appeal board decisions, refunds generated by courts for tax objection complaints, certificates of error, and several other categories of refunds lead to this lost revenue. Because the refunds are issued after the tax bills are generated, the total levy amount is not redistributed among remaining taxpayers but rather removed from the current property tax collections paid to taxing bodies. Over the last eight years, the district has averaged refunds of six point six million dollars per year. We continue to recommend PTAP intervention to preserve tax revenue and further prevent tax burden shift onto taxpayers. There are several considerations that set the foundation for the twenty twenty-three levy recommendation that Barb just shared. Over the past several years, the district's budget has been anything but typical. From the start of the pandemic, the district began to recognize lower costs, beginning with remote and hybrid learning paired with systemic labor shortages. When the district returned to in-person learning and began hiring additional ESSER staff, additional funding was received to offset these expenditures. The district saw expenses lower than planned in the areas of fuel, utilities, food, supplies, and salaries and benefits. While lower, we continued to receive additional pandemic funds, relief funds from various sources. The combination of these factors led to a favorable budget position, which allowed us to utilize our budget surplus to offset other areas of revenue. The district offered tax relief for multiple years and has waived school fees since the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We have been pleased to be able to offer this relief to our taxpayers and families over the past years, but through the past few years, we have started to see our position shift. We are experiencing record-high inflation that is driving cost increases in areas of supplies and services. Labor shortages have driven wages up in areas to remain competitive in a tight market. Areas including benefits and construction have had costs that have outpaced the already high rate of inflation. As the paradigm has shifted in the areas, in the costs of goods and services, it has also shifted in the needs of our students. As students continue to adjust in the post-pandemic world, we continue to recognize the increased need to offer greater social-emotional learning supports within our schools. We have seen an increase in our English learner population, which has driven higher staffing needs in our schools. There are also heightened requests for safety and security measures within our facilities. And with all of these factors, our favorable budget position of just a few years ago has shifted to a budget that is needed to support the greater needs within our schools. In order to support these needs, the levy recommendation before you tonight supports preservation of financial stability for the district while providing revenue necessary to fund these new areas of expense. To provide greater context to the needs that I just referenced, the costs on this slide are included in the district's long-term financial projection and were used when assessing our levy recommendation this year. The board has made a commitment to our community that safety and security of our buildings is an ongoing priority. While our safety and security personnel have been a tremendous asset within our schools, their presence has a cost of approximately a million dollars a year, which began in this year's budget and carries forward into future years. We have a growing need for EL staff in our classrooms and estimate that the need will continue in future years, adding a half million dollars in additional staffing each year for the next several years. On tonight's agenda, you have received information on the needs of our facilities. While many of the costs in our study are not urgent or will not impact our ability to provide instruction, we are dedicating an additional four million dollars per year beginning in fiscal twenty-five to fund additional projects that are health and life safety-related. There has been discussion of retaining positions that were created under ESSER and reposting them as standard positions within our schools to support the ongoing SEL needs of our students. We also have discussed additional building entrance safety technology and staff as an extra layer of security within our facilities. All costs are included in the financial projection that will be shared later on in our presentation. The district is committed to ongoing facility maintenance and improvements across all of our school campuses. Priorities are outlined in the board's strategic plan, the district's ten-year facility plan, and now also include those items that have been identified in our facility audit. A comprehensive report on these items is included in tonight's meeting agenda, but the costs detailed here are provided as information as they are included in the five-year financial As Barb shared earlier, we have a recommendation that the Board of Education would waive the property tax refund recapture levy. This is a supplemental levy that the district is eligible to receive each year. This supplemental levy, which is again known as the property tax recapture levy, is automatically calculated and assessed by the county as a means of allowing taxing bodies to collect dollars that were lost by way of property or tax refunds in the prior year. Over the past two years, the district has fully abated this recapture levy totaling close to eight million dollars in taxpayer relief. While the district does not know the amount of this year's recapture levy until after November fifteenth, we are assuming continued abatement of it for the purpose of our financial The board has awarded a great deal of tax relief over the past several years, acting as responsible stewards of taxpayer resources. The board has a longstanding history of providing tax relief using different means, ranging from debt service abatement to the property tax relief grant to passing two consecutive levies less than the PTEL cap. In fact, in three of the last five years, the board has increased its operating levy by less than allowed under PTEL. In addition, the district has not levied for the recapture levy and has provided families with student fee relief. The board has taken tremendous effort to provide this relief, and it should not be forgotten that over the past two years, these reductions that were approved provide year-over-year relief to taxpayers because the overall baseline levy amount was reduced. In just two years, the cumulative total in the levy reductions are ten million dollars, which will continue to grow into perpetuity. With each abatement or levy reduction that has been awarded over the past few years, the administration has been very transparent that levying less than PTEL is not sustainable long-term. We are now at a time where a levy equal to PTEL is warranted to fund our future operations. The district has worked diligently to provide balance between the commitment to provide a robust educational experience for students, levy for the funds that have been needed to support our operations, and to provide relief in numerous ways. The district's commitment to providing a high-quality education with responsible use of its resources is further demonstrated in this chart. Using the State Board of Education operating expense per pupil data for comparable area high school districts, the district is among the lowest costs spent on a per pupil basis. And while our cost and financial need is increasing, we will continue to strive to maintain this balance into the future. We have updated our projection with the levy recommendation to analyze the impact on our financial position for the next five years. Preparing a multi-year projection requires making many assumptions, most of which are subject to board approval. To specifically call out a few of these before we get into the numbers, we assume that the board will approve the levy recommendation presented this evening. While the board has waived student fees for the past several years, this projection does assume that instructional fees are reinstated at a hundred and seventy dollars per student starting with the twenty twenty-five school year. We do assume that select ESSER positions will be retained. We assume staffing increases and headcount year-over-year to support English learner, English language learner student needs, and we assume CPI will be three percent for twenty twenty-four and two point six percent for all future years. We will first see the impact of the recommended levy in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This levy will then become the foundation for growth for all future years. Please focus on the budget surplus deficit line in the middle of the page. As you can see, after next year, we will start to see large budget deficits each year. This will decline our fund balance down to and below the minimum fund balance level required by policy by the year twenty twenty-nine. This is after levying at the tax cap each year and after reinstating student fees. This deterioration in fund balance should give you pause. We need to begin to align our revenues with our expenditures. Based upon our strategic initiatives, this starts with this levy and future levies being extended at the tax cap. This slide shows the past, present, and future fund balance levels as compared to our board policy minimum threshold. The tan-colored line represents the minimum reserve levels we must maintain for the educational fund individually and the operating funds combined. Upon reaching this level, we must have a plan to maintain or grow our reserves. The red line is the amount of the educational fund balance level. At June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we were at thirty-seven percent. This amount is projected to decline below the thirty-three percent required threshold before the end of twenty-nine. This is of concern. Even with a full levy and adding back in student fees, we're projecting that our staffing and supply costs are going to outpace our revenue growth in this fund. The operating fund balance is represented by the orange line. This is our reserves for all of our funds combined. As of June thirtieth, our operating fund balance was fifty-two point eight percent, meaning that our cash in the bank could cover about a half a year of our expenses. By fiscal year twenty-nine, this too has reached the minimum requirement. Paying for over twenty million dollars a year in capital projects from reserves is a major contributing factor to this decline. Last year, the district filed a levy that was three point six million dollars less than the PTEL limit. We are allowed to recover this amount by increasing our levy in one or more of the three years following the filing, as long as we don't exceed five percent in any of those years. This would be the first year that we would be eligible to recoup a portion of these funds if we so chose. However, since we are already recommending a five percent levy, there is no room to add in any of these lost funds. This will be reexamined in each of the next two years to determine if increasing our levy to recover these funds is appropriate and allowable. In any year that a taxing body requests a levy increase of five percent or more, the truth and taxation requirements apply. This mandates that the taxing body determines the levy amount prior, twenty days prior to its adoption, and publish the amount in a local newspaper. A public hearing must be held to allow for comments from the community. We have filed these requirements in the past, even when the truth and taxation statute did not apply to us. If the board sets a tentative levy in the amount of the recommendation, the truth and taxation requirement would apply. A hearing would be held at the December fourteenth Board of Education meeting. Twenty twenty-three levy information is presented to the board over a series of meetings. Introductory information was first presented at the September board meeting. Tonight's agenda will provide the board with additional information on the levy, including the twenty twenty-three levy recommendation. The board will then set the amount of the tentative levy in November, followed by a public hearing and levy adoption in December. The levy must be filed and approved with Cook County by the last Tuesday in December. The levy recommendation set forth tonight accomplishes many goals. First and foremost, it can, supports the continuation of excellence in our instructional programs for our students. It provides for staffing growth and new initiatives to support the needs of our students and buildings. It supports funding our capital improvements through reserves and remaining debt-free. And it puts us in the best possible position to create financial stability heading into the future. Thank you for your time and attention this evening, and we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Before we open it up for the panel that's here, Ms. Barron, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you so much for putting this together and presenting at my full length.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, thank you guys for an excellent presentation. I know there's a concern with where our reserves are going to be in twenty twenty-nine. With that being said, and I brought it up in previous meetings, when it comes to items like hardware, equipment, vehicles, and et cetera, has there ever been any consideration on leasing those items over a period of time to allow us now to take those reserves and invest them and try to get some of that interest income?
We have looked at that in the past, and the cost-benefit analysis that we have done on those has led us to the conclusion that it has been more cost-effective for us to make the purchases and own those technologies and vehicles upfront. But it's certainly something that we would, you know, be analyzing again moving forward.
Yeah, one of the items in particular are the iPads. You know, when we look at the lump sum that we dump into purchasing iPads, and then we're regaining capital when we go out and sell whatever amounts are being sold to the students, you know, I think about that amount of money that is dumped into the iPads, and if those are under a lease, I wonder what that will look like. And if those are under a lease, I wonder what that will look like.
Certainly something that we can explore.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
I also thank you for your presentation and putting this all together and making it very informative for ourselves, as well as the public that has access and is listening and here in this room. You had mentioned that it's recommended that we reinstate the loss factor. Is that correct?
Yes.
And one of the advantages of that is that it allows the tax levy to go to the max. Is that correct? So my question is, if we're being recommended to go to the max, then why would we seek to reinstate the loss factor if there's, for this current levy, no advantage?
We're estimating what the maximum is, and Cook County will calculate what it actually is. So if we have underestimated, the loss factor will add to that in an amount to catch us up to the tax cap.
But if we're recommending to go to the PTAL limit, and we remove the loss factor, or we reinstate the loss factor, does that allow us to then be levied above the PTAL limit?
So the PTAL limit is two components. It's the operating component, and then it is the new property growth. So when Barb is talking about the estimation, we know that the operating levy limitation is 5%. We make an estimation of the 0.3% for the new property growth. That is where there can be variance in what is actually extended and what is the true PTAL limit is. With that being said, the change, and it can go up or down from what our estimation is, the change in the new property growth affects only those properties that are coming onto the tax rolls. That is, you know, if it was 0.4%, that 0.4% is not extended onto the existing taxpayer. So the loss factor accounts for that component, the new property, but then it also accounts for the delinquencies, as Barb had detailed in the slide that we had shared as well.
So I guess my overall question on this is, if we levy to the max and reinstate the loss factor, does that present the opportunity, the potential, for the levy to be more than what we would recommend at the max?
Only if new property is higher than what we estimate.
Okay.
Otherwise, the tax assessor will not give us more than the 5%. What they would give us more is if the new property is higher than what we're estimating. And I think it's important, Lauren brought up a good point, and that's why we always separate new property, is that 0.3% or 0.2% or 0.5%, whatever it ends up being, does not get spread across our taxpayers. It represents the new property that's coming on the rolls.
And we certainly have seen a lot of new property going on in our district right now. Okay, thank you for that. Would you mind for people who are listening, the public, or any board members who may not really understand what abatement means? If you can explain what that means? I mean, those of us who have been on the Board through abatements know what that means, but perhaps there's someone who's part of this presentation receipt that doesn't understand what that means.
Sure. Go ahead. Abatement means foregoing a portion of the tax dollars that you previously filed for. So if you file an extension for $250 million with Cook County in December, you can come back within the next three months and forego a portion of those dollars, and that amount that you forego is an abatement. And it's a specific amount that the Board would pass through resolution.
The abatement that's being discussed tonight is the recapture levy abatement. Last year, as in the Board documents, it shows it was $4.7 million that we did not take from the taxpayers, and we told the assessor's office, we want to abate that, leave that, do not take that from them. We are recommending the same thing, to say we are not taking that from our taxpayers. Every public body actually has to go through the resolution to say, we are abating this. If they do not, it automatically comes from the tax assessor's office.
Thank you. On Slide 23, where you show the projection, yep, and as Mr. Bradley had pointed out, it's projecting, if this holds true, right, that based on our expenditures and the revenue, that we would fall below the operating fund balance of 33%, right, or 33.3%, according to Board policy. To Mr. Bradley's point regarding expenditures, I would like to suggest that we take a very, very hard look at how we're spending money to try to offset the deficit as much as we can through either cost control, cost reduction, maybe not doing some things that are in the plan to do. I know that's not a very favorable thing to look at, but maybe there are some things that are nice-to-haves versus have-to-haves. And I know the quality of our district, we do not want to impact the quality of our education and services to our students and staff, but maybe there's some other things that we could take a really hard look at, and the administration can, from a departmental perspective, look with what they spend and see if there's opportunities for cost reduction for the next fiscal year to see if there's a way to perhaps help offset some of our forecasted concerns that we have.
Yeah, and just to address that comment, certainly, and I think Barb mentioned that in her comments, that the reason we do a five-year projection is so that we have an opportunity to see what our trends are and so that we can adjust before, instead of react, once we're in a position that we don't want to be. There are many things behind these deficits that you don't necessarily see all of the details here, but you've seen some of the information on the prior slides. For example, we have a plan to spend the $18 million in land sale proceeds. So that is a deliberate spend-down of reserves, and we have some other capital projects in there as well. But we agree with you that there is a need to just review and align and make sure that we are keeping the district in a sound financial position. We also know that there are many variables, as we went through, that can change year-over-year, both up and down, so we will continue to monitor those and update the projection accordingly.
And I appreciate your pointing out the current inflation rates and things that are going on with the economy, period, and the fact that many of these things are impacting our constituents and residents and students and staff as well. And also, some of the things you pointed out as things that are, that we're considering doing, like English-language learners and some of the staff that we brought on with ESER funds that are not going to necessarily be there for us going forward, but we're looking to perhaps have them in place permanently to continue to support our students.
Yeah, and those will all be future discussions that will come before the Board.
Sure. Thank you very much again for your presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Cavell, questions?
Yes, so, speaking about, I believe, the loss factor that we were talking about on Slide 11, and we have to pass a resolution whether to reinstate that, and then you mentioned that, you know, we waived that, and it's essentially waived then in perpetuity until we make a resolution to change that. I just want to clarify, does it work the same way in reverse? If we were to reinstate that factor, does it then continue in perpetuity until we waived that again?
It does.
Okay, thank you. So I'm on Slide 23, the same slide that Mr. Rosenbloom was speaking to, speaking about. And I'm wondering, you know, I'm looking at the CPI assumptions, and I'm wondering if you can tell me a little bit more about where, you know, and I know that to a certain extent, it is your best estimate. I don't want to call it a guess, it's more educated than that, but I'm wondering if you could give me a little bit more context as to how we ended up at those numbers, because to be honest with you, they seem, they seem low to me, so I'm hoping you know something I don't.
Sure, we did go to several sources for what is projected to be the CPI for this year, and all indications were that we were trending between 3% and 3.5% for this current year. So we chose to be conservative and went with a 3%. 2.6 would be the average of the last 10 years of CPI. We chose not to use the average of the last five because it's been so high, we didn't want to put more revenue in the projection than we felt we should. So this might be conservative, but we don't have a crystal ball.
With that being said, too, in our research of projections, and certainly the further out you go, the more, the less reliable the information is with all financial projections, including the sources that we are researching. But while we are showing 2.6 as our historical average, there are many sources that show that lower. So while we may be conservative on one end, we may be overstated on another, and that is another reason why the production will continue to be updated, and we will monitor those trends.
And my third isn't really a question, it's more of a comment. I certainly understand the rationale for the reinstatement of student fees. We've had a pre-warning about this, and we've had discussions about the increase, you know, the permanent hiring of ESER-funded staff, et cetera. This has been brought up before. I've got to say, though, and, you know, I was part of the Board that originally, some of us were on this Board when we originally waived that fee, and, you know, nothing's forever, we knew that we wouldn't be able to do that forever. I am a little uncomfortable with just immediate 175 return to normal when it's been zero for so long. You know, I just know, you know, as a family, let's say there's someone who's a sophomore this year, they've got another person, and you've got two kids, haven't been used to paying student fees for two years, and then all of a sudden, next year, you know, the first-year fees are reinstated, we've got $300 to pay. So I'm not saying, of course, I would love it if we could continue to waive those student fees. My argument has always been, as long as our, you know, we have the money to do so, we should. So when I'm looking at the projections, I certainly understand the argument for having to reinstate such a fee. I've got to tell you, though, I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with just returning to status quo at 175 straight out of the gate. But that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes, just to clarify, the average homeowner would see an increase of $160? So that's right about where that fee would be as well. Can you please clarify the capital additional $4 million? Because from what I had seen was, we were looking at $18 million in 2223 budget, last budget passed went to $21 million, so we would be looking at about $25 million annually in our capital outlay? Is that what I'm hearing?
You're on Slide 17 for the $4 million?
Thank you. The capital numbers that we have been carrying in our financial projection have not changed.
Because we were at $21 million just in September when we passed the budget that was presented.
And that's what we're showing here is $21 million.
So that's plus $4 million on top of the 21, right? Because this is an increase?
No, the increase is that our health and life safety study runs out, and we are assuming that we will continue with $4 million in that category in future years to pay for those types of projects, roofs, mechanicals, those types of systems.
Can you clarify runs out? Because usually the budget's built off of the prior year, so when you say a $4 million increase, I'm understanding it to be $4 million in addition to the prior budget. At least that's how I understand increase to what we've seen before.
It is the health and life safety component. This year, we have $1 million, I believe, in our budget for health and life safety items. Next year, we will have none because our survey is done, and then we are increasing to four.
Right, but just to clarify, our health and life safety is within the capital outlay line item. It is not a separate line?
It is with, all within the O and M budget.
Right, but when we're presented the budget, we have the capital outlay line item, right? So it's within there?
We have three categories. So we have our major capital, our life safety, and then our routine maintenance capital.
All under capital outlay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so our capital outlay in our last budget was $21 million. Tonight, you save like $4 million more as part of your projections for the tax levy.
These are the averages that you will see. Again, this year, we have $1 million for life safety, next year, there is nothing, and the following year in the projection, we have $4 million.
Ms. Peterson's point, when she says that we need to align our revenues to support our expenditures, you know, most people in the community would say we need to align our expenditures to align with our revenues. Salary increases in 2023 averaged 4% to 4.5%, and we're asking for 5%. I'm not sure how we can expect our community to just continue to pay more in taxes without having a significant increase in their salaries to do so. I think that that seems unrealistic. I think that, to Mr. Rosenbloom's point, we need to look at reducing some of these expenditures to ensure that what we're asking for tax revenue makes sense, and I'm not seeing that with this recommendation. And that's my perspective on this.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Cavell?
No, I'll reserve further comment until next month. We've got, we've got a couple of months to talk about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Barron? All right, well, I thank you very much for the presentation. I know that we have more information further on down in our agenda for tonight, so thank you very much for the presentation and for answering the questions.
Thank you.
All right, then that takes us to our consent agenda. I did have a request to, of the removal of Item Number F, the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board. Are there any other items that a Board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, there will be three motions, because not all Board members were present at our September 21st, 2023 regular Board Meeting. So we'll be having a separate motion on that. So I have three separate motions. The first one is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21, 2023, and the removal of Item F, resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, be removed, and that the remaining be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion there? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, then that motion carries. That takes us to the second recommended action, and that is that the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21, 2023 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The last recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the resolutions authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2022. Docket numbers 2022-32793 and 2022-34405. And further authorize Franzic as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene in appeal proceeding forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on properties for which the district receives notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay. The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Then that takes us to our special reports and communications. We have some information items, Freedom of Information Act requests. The next item is free and reduced-priced meal eligibility. Dr. Small, anything?
This report indicates an increase in free and reduced meal eligibility over last year from 35% to 41% of our students who are eligible for a free or reduced meal at our schools. Our range within our several campuses goes from 23% to 61% of students who are eligible for these meal benefits. The board's policy for student fees allows for fees to be waived for students who are eligible for these meal benefits. Through our support of our staff, community resources, the District 211 Foundation, Realtors Against Homelessness, and other donations, we're able to support families whenever possible to keep students engaged in all opportunities our students have to offer, including after-school opportunities.
Okay. Any, any questions? All right. Thank you. That will take us to the local police department's body worn camera policies and general orders. It's an information item. Dr. Small?
The Schaumburg Police Department was an early adopter of using body worn cameras. At the May 25, 2023 Board of Education meeting, the District 211 Board approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Schaumburg regarding the unique position of the SRO in regard to body, police-issued body worn cameras. Since that time, all three of our local police departments, including the Schaumburg Police Departments, have updated their individual policy and procedure manuals, or general orders. These procedures detail all aspects of the body worn cameras, including the role of the SRO, who spends most of their day engaging in community caretaking functions within the school community. The body worn camera shall not be activated when the SRO is engaged in the community caretaking functions, such as conversations with students and staff that are unrelated to an investigation of a crime. During these school community caretaking functions, the SRO will not operate their cameras. The current documents related to body worn cameras for the police departments within the villages of Schaumburg, Palatine, and Hoffman Estates are attached to the board agenda for information.
Any questions? All right. Then that will take us to safety and security update. Information item again. Dr. Small?
The safety of District 211 students and staff is a top priority. The District 211 Administration and local police departments have opened an effective communication regarding assessments of safety protocols, audits, and updated safety technologies. As referenced in the September 2023 Board of Education meeting agenda materials, District Administration in a partnership with the police departments have continued the evaluation of facility scanning systems and their effectiveness to stop weapons from coming on campus, potential gaps in the ability of one school resource officer to keep a school safe, and any recommendations based on new safety reports from the Secret Service, FBI, or Department of Homeland Security. This assessment is currently in place, with reports and potential recommendations coming back to the board in November.
Any questions? All right. Then that will take us to unfinished business, and that is some information, again, in regards to the 2023 tax levy. Dr. Small? Okay. We've gotten materials. Any questions in regards to that? Okay. Thank you. That'll take us to new business, then. We have the 10-year master facility assessment plan and capital improvement plan. Dr. Small?
This report summarizes the findings from the 10-year master facility plan and capital improvement work completed to date, including life safety projects. This report also includes the capital improvement project timeline scheduled over the next several years. At its December 2022 meeting, the board took action to approve Archon Associates to create a 10-year facility assessment and assessment management plan for District 211. The facility assessment included the five high school facility sites, Higgins Education Center, North Campus, and the Administration Center. The facility assessment is designed to allow the district to evaluate the condition of facilities and plan for future maintenance or replacements. The 10-year plan is intended to be a planning tool, as it is expected to be evolving document that will be adjusted based on continuous monitoring of the facility conditions, identification of evolving needs, and adjustment based on the budget. The scope of each identified priority item will be further discussed on a project-by-project basis and as budgets are updated accordingly.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I noticed that priority four is defined, but I don't know if it's just missing on, on the table that's on the top of page four, or if there are no priority four items, or if they were just rolled into priority three.
There are priority four items that are identified on the survey, but they do not have costs associated with them because they are beyond the 10-year mark.
Any other questions? All right. If not, then we'll move to the next item, and that's an action item, that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designate to renew a contract with Nania Energy Advisors for the purpose of conducting a request for proposal and energy auctions for natural gas services for the district for the period beginning July 1, 2024, and for electricity services beginning July 1, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Dr. Small?
In January of 2021, the board authorized the district to utilize the services of Nania Energy Consultants to conduct an RFP and subsequent auction for electricity and natural gas services. Procuring energy is unique, particularly with the change in rates from day to day. After vetting several different methods of procurement, we feel this is still the most transparent and competitive process. The district had very favorable results using this process in the past. The results of the auction resulted in savings of $1.1 million compared to market rates over the same period. It is recommended that we engage a similar process again for both natural gas and electricity. Markets are very volatile now, so it's recommended that we conduct this process as soon as possible to avoid the spike rates that may occur in the winter months.
Any questions?
Can, can you just clarify, the auctions will begin in July 24, nine months from now, and then in 21 months from now? Is that correct?
No. Our, our contract is through the end of June in '24 and '25. They are recommending that we conduct the auction now, though, because the rates are expected to increase. So, while we conduct the auction now, ultimately, what we get to is the rate that the vendor supplies to us, and we're able to lock that in, but the rate will not take effect until July 1 of the respective year.
So, we'll hold the current rate from '21 until '24, and then?
Yeah. So, we will, the contracts that we are under right now and the rates that we are paying will continue through the, for the duration of the term.
Okay. So, we're, we're going to auction now for rates 21 months from now?
So, the natural gas expires June 30, 2024. That one, we are definitely doing 100%. The recommendation is that, and what we are going to continue to work with Nania on, is should we do a portion of our electric, even though it's for 2025, to see what type of rates we get? We do not have to lock them. We can reject the rate in its entirety and just decide that we're going to kind of ride it out and see what happens. They want to do a little bit more assessment and see what the projections are. But they did say that since we are such a large client, that we may have advantage to do in a portion now and then locking the, the remainder later on at a, a future date.
Are there fees for doing multiple auctions?
No, we do not pay any fees to Nania. The fees are paid by the supplier to Nania directly. And if we do not, if we decide to reject the results of an auction, there is no, we have no penalty, no fees.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Then that takes us to the next several items. Our first readings for board policy. The first one is purported policy deletion of letter H negotiations. Dr. Small? Do you want to add anything, or?
I'll try to be brief, because we have a lot, a lot of these. But this was discussed in detail at the July 20, 2023 board meeting, in terms of that particular section not having policies under it.
Okay. Any questions there? All right. The next one is proposed policy revision BCE board appointments. And this, again, is the first reading. And do we have any questions in regards to that one? This is, Mr. Dombrowski brought to our attention of a couple of committees that need to be board committees, and this is our information in regards to it.
I, I have a couple of questions. When, when we had our discussion regarding whether we were going to adopt the IASB, the recommendation from the administration was to review policies on a five-year cycle. We took no action on that recommendation?
We're proceeding, and we will bring them in.
You're proceeding on a five-year cycle?
On the five-year cycle from the IASB.
But, but, you know, I'm not, we took no action on that recommendation. We, we moved on. There was no agreement or disagreement from the board?
There was not a motion.
There was no motion, Ms. Peterson?
Right. There was no motion in regards to?
Can we stop, please, until this noise is, oh?
Michelle? Yes. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Right. Okay. I'm just trying to understand. The administration's moving forward with their recommendation regardless of board agreement. Is that correct, Ms. President?
We were, we were following, because IASB does the same thing with the five-year. So, that was the consensus of the board to?
I don't believe it was the consensus. I don't think consensus was agreed to. We, we agreed that we voted no on the IASB, but we did not discuss the recommendation or take action on the recommendation.
There was no motion that was presented in regards to that, no. But we, we were following the, what IASB does, and unless somebody wants to bring something up as, as a discussion in regards to it, we followed along.
Like I said at the last meeting, I think it should be on a four-year cycle, not a five-year cycle, and I, I just want to reiterate that. With regard to this item, where does our policy committee fall?
There, there is no board committee that's a policy committee. There's an administrative policy committee that brings recommendations to the entire board for first, for a review, and then a second meeting for a vote.
Okay. Because traditionally, our policy committee would have board members or liaisons, and I'm not sure that, that the new language that says board members may serve as liaisons to administrative committees, and the superintendent will appoint any such liaisons, taking into consideration any requests from board members and specific appointments. It was my understanding prior that, that this district would make the request through the board president. The board president would, would accept those liaisons and appoint those liaisons. And now it appears that, that board requests to be on administrative committees are at the superintendent's discretion. After several discussions regarding, regarding the board policy committee, I was under the impression that that would be a board responsibility delegated to the superintendent, not necessarily responsibility that would fall under the purview of the superintendent at his administrative committee. I think the ultimate responsibility for policy development falls on the board. And I think it's pretty clear language in IASB, if you're going to follow that direction. So, I, I think I'm at, I'm at a disagreement with the administration and, and how that, that's laid out. And I think we should put clarity in this policy regarding the board policies committee.
The policy is an administrative committee, and we had quite a bit of discussion in regards to that, where we've got the readings coming before us here. Our first reading, we have an opportunity, all seven members have some say in regards to it. It would come back to us the second time. It could come back to us a third time. It could come back to us a fourth time. But everyone has an opportunity to, to speak in regards to that. I, I think you lost me a little bit. Tell me exactly what your main concern is with this policy BCE. A line item?
Sure. Line 71 through 73.
If I can clarify?
Please.
The difference between an administrative committee is that it involves administrators and the superintendent. It is not directed by the board. The whole purpose, no, I shouldn't say the whole purpose. One purpose of this policy is to make sure it is detailed in our policy, the difference between a board committee and an administrative committee. That's why that language is in there.
No, I, I completely understand. I, I question our board policy committee being a administrative committee versus a board committee with the responsibilities delegated or the superintendent-appointed chair. I think, I think there needs to be control of the policies by the board, specifically in, in this clarification, because if, at some point, the board wants to put liaisons on a, on a board policy committee, the superintendent can basically say no, according to lines 71 through 73. And I have concerns with that.
So, Madam President, I guess the question would be to Mr. Dombrowski, whether or not he would like to make a recommendation to this board, according to lines 10 and 11, to create a policy committee to assist with the board's governance and to comply with state law requirements where applicable, and to make that a board committee opposed to an administrative committee. Sounds like that may be what he's looking for.
I'm not exactly certain what he's, he's looking for. I think it sounds to me as if, you know, if, if we have administrative committees, and there is a desire of, from the board, a consensus to have somebody serve as a liaison, then that's a consideration that we can discuss as a board. I think what we're?
But even if the board, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I think what we're looking at here is establishing the board committees, because this was brought to our attention, and we need to address it. So, this is information from IASB, are also our review by our attorneys, to make sure we're meeting the law as it's stated. So, to me, talking about liaisons is a little bit different than focusing on this policy.
I would request that, to Mr. Rosenblum's point, that we add to the standing board committees, the board policy committee.
Standing board committees.
So, Madam President, perhaps that's either a motion or a motion for future, or an item for future discussion to recommend that it be added as a board committee?
This is the first reading. This is our discussion. So?
This is the first reading. What, what committee do you want to add?
The board policy committee. I think it needs to stay within the board's responsibilities.
But it's not been a board committee. It's an administrative committee, because then the administration is the one that's doing the legwork, the preparing of the documents, things of that nature. If you make it a committee of the board, we end up having to do the legwork. And I don't know if we can do that.
Madam President, I would point you to the, to the policy here, which says that these standing board committees may include non-board members and zero to two board members, depending on the committee's purpose. It doesn't necessarily mean that if it's a board committee assigned to the administration, that we're doing the legwork.
Madam President, I, can I interject, please, and make some comments?
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm not really a big fan of doublespeak, and it is my impression that maybe members of this board already have certain people in mind that they would like to see on such committees, would may be made easier by the changes currently being discussed. I would like to instead focus on the actual policy before us, and I would like to say that the policy committee has not been stifling board member involvement or control of policies since I was first elected in 2019, and I strongly disagree with any implication or argument that it does. No policy is enacted without board approval. No policy is deleted without board approval. Board members have been more than welcome to attend policy committee meetings, and the entire process of handling those policies that have come before us have been handled with the utmost transparency by board members, in my experience, and the administration. And so, I would like to reiterate that board members can at any time bring forward policies that they would like to have a look at, policies that they would like to see implemented, policies that they would like to see deleted, which, if I remember right here, we, that was? which, if I remember right here, that was what started this whole discussion, the deletion of such a folder and a category in our policy manual. This is thus the discussion of which cycle we should review our policies under, et cetera. None of that is done independently, without direction, approval of this board. And I strongly resent any implication otherwise, particularly when it is for a vision, perhaps, that certain members share that have not yet been brought before the board as a whole or been given any sort of consensus. So I think it's possible to make an argument for changes you would like to be seeing without implicating the competency or a lack of transparency among the currently operating administration or previous board members of every political persuasion.
Madam President, I'd like to reiterate at the last meeting, these policies were brought forth in order to be in compliance with the law of what were required, standing board committees. This isn't pertaining to any vision. I kind of disagree with the implication that it might be. This is the discussion that occurs at the board table. When the policies come to the board table for the first reading, this discussion could easily be had in a committee meeting prior to the board table having the meeting. But this is the process that we have in place without having board members involved on the committee. And so here we are.
All right.
I think it's important that we have these discussions and provide this input. And this is the forum for it.
And you're exactly right. This is the forum, not with just two board members sitting at a policy meeting. We've discussed this. We discussed this at length, and we moved on.
And I'd like to, you know...
We moved on.
That's fair, but I still have more comment to add to that. This discussion doesn't get closed. When we had our Finance and Budget Committee meetings, we've had seven board members sitting in that committee meeting with input on budget and finance items.
And we decided not to continue having that second meeting because it was a rehash of what was presented to us at the board meeting. So it was presented twice, which was not necessary. That was why that committee had folded. I would like to get us back to what we're looking at here. And what you originally brought up to us was there were the laws requiring the establishment of the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee and Behavioral Interventions Committee. That's what we're looking at. That's what's come before us. This is for the first reading. If you have something that you would like to offer specifically in regards to that, please do so. And then it could come back to us.
That is my offer, that we add board policy committee as a standing committee, and we put that under item four, as far as board committees.
All right. I do not agree with that. I don't think that that's inappropriate under our standing committees because it's an administrative committee.
I don't think it should be. According to IASB, that is a responsibility that rests with the board.
Madam President, I will happily take the interpretation of the legal language of IASB from our attorney, who has been very thorough in giving us their review of the legislation, which impacted the policy that is before us today.
And we had that information. We can pass that out again and go forward with that.
And I think it's important to note that we did not have these standing committees as standing board committees. We had them functioning as administrative committees through safety, which were not open meetings per the Open Meetings Act, which was a legal requirement that our council did not correct action until we brought it up and additionally pushed the concern to where we are tonight. So I have to say that I would not entirely rely on our council to protect us in this situation.
Madam President, that seems to be a very good example of exactly how much impact board members have in the development and the execution of policy, utilizing legal counsel as consultancy when needed. For, of course, it is not their job to review our policy for us and make recommendations on our behalf. We have consulted with them, and I very much appreciate that they are willing to do so.
Exactly my point, which is why this should be a board committee where the board is responsible for reviewing the policies.
And the policies all come forward to us. And I don't remember how many policies we have.
About 340.
About 340 policies. So there's a timeliness, and even with the IASB with their five-year cycle of reviewing the policies.
Madam President, do we need to, at this point, it sounds like, in previous situations, do we need like a consensus of the board as a whole? I'm not sure on the first reading if the discussion is how it stands, if a consensus on, you know, I'm not exactly sure about the Roberts Rules of Order and Procedures and going forward with Mr. Dombrowski suggesting a change that may or may not be agreed to.
Are there any other questions or comments in regards to the document before you, the board, the policy BCE as presented in the first reading? Ms. Barron?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bradley?
None.
Okay, Mr. Rosenblum?
I don't have any questions regarding board appointments in this policy revision.
Okay. So is there consensus to move forward with this? And then it'll come back to us. And if there's something specific that you have, or maybe we can, if you would like, we can double-check with the attorneys in regards to any question that stands here.
Clarification, Madam President. Do you mean consensus to move forward with the policy as it is currently written on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. It's a yes for me.
Okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
No, I think it needs to be modified.
All right, do you want to give us something in writing that you think needs to be modified? Or you just want a standing committee?
I think that the board policy committee should not be an administrative committee.
Madam President, that's...
We've gone through that. So I think we're going to move forward and...
Madam President, regarding discussion of this particular policy, this is regarding board appointments and not committees. And if there's a decision to add a committee, that that should be brought up as a separate item for future discussion and not tonight.
It could be something that's a future discussion, yes. This one deals with these committees that have been brought to our attention that we need to have.
Is there another policy that defines standing board committees, to Mr. Rosenblum's point?
I don't know offhand.
I don't believe there would be.
But this one talks about the, it's created... These are the ones we've got listed here. And these are the ones that have served us over the years. The policy being brought to all of the board members meets the need for all board members to have input. So I'm going to ask if there's no other questions or comments. This, we're going to move forward, and then this will, our first reading, and it'll be brought back to us for our second reading.
Can we finish the consensus?
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Rosenblum, do you have consensus to move forward with this?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, or Mr. Bradley?
That's all right. Although it's not an actionable item, I would like to move forward.
Okay. Ms. Barron, do you have consensus to move this forward? And it'll come back to us for our second reading.
Can you just say what we're moving forward on? I just missed that last part.
Okay.
A little hard to hear.
The file BCE, the Board Committee Appointments. This is the first reading. We've had discussion in regards to it. It'll come back to us next month for the second reading. Do you have consensus to move forward with it for the second reading?
Yes, we can move forward. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. All right, so we're gonna, we'll move forward with that. All right, then that takes us to the proposed policy revision BCBA, Board Officers. Any questions on this one? Okay. If not, that'll come back to us. Policy BCCA, District Treasurer, that's a deletion because then that's stated in the prior one, BCBA. Any questions there? All right, then that takes us to Policy JFCO, Behavioral Intervention Policy. Any questions there? All right. Then the next one is Policy BDD, the Quorum. It's just an addition of... So the Quorum, as far as being physically present and those who can call in. And it adds item number four, Unexpected Child Care Obligations. Are there any questions there?
I do have a question on that one. When we say unexpected childcare, that's really broad. So is there any depth to that? I really, okay, just want to make sure.
That's what the law said.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it could be a sick child at home, can't, don't have a babysitter. Okay, any, no questions? All right, then that takes us to Policy JHFD, Student Use of Automobiles and Parking. Any questions there?
Just to be clear, we're going to a direct tow policy, no tickets, no warning. I know that tow fees are way more expensive than a ticket and a lot more difficult to deal with than a parking ticket. But just so I understand, we're, this is a more punitive approach within this policy?
We give plenty of warnings. We do not ticket them by the police, but we do give warnings.
So, but the way I understand the policy...
And then it is a private company that tows.
So...
It is not the police department that tows nor tickets the vehicles.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, Dr. Small? I mean, how do we know that it needs to get a ticket? And what do, how do we let people know about that?
So there's three places you can park in our building. If you're a student, you have to have a student parking permit, and you park in designated areas, which are marked by a different coloring. I believe it's white, but don't quote me on that. We have staff that also have a permit that they put in their car and are able to park in a different designated area. We have visitors who have a designated area for visitor parking. What we do have are sometimes students who decide that they're going to come and park on our campus without a parking permit and therefore are taking up spots that have been designated to other students who have paid for their parking permit. And that obviously causes problems in our parking lots. Driving to school is important to kids. And that's why we have a permit system to make sure we can control how many cars are coming at the same time. Our school gives warnings, written warnings, calls home. We do this multiple times before we would ever go the route of towing. And as long as a student is heeding the warnings, they should never have their car towed.
How many cars have been towed in the last year?
Zero.
Zero. Okay, thank you.
I don't think ever.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Then that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution 2023. Mr. Rosenblum?
Madam President, I motion, I motion to limit the time of discussion on this topic item to 15 minutes.
Actually, I think it's going to be about five.
Is that a second?
So, so the...
He wants to make a motion in regards to it.
Second.
Second.
Are you...
Thank you.
All right.
Requires a two-thirds vote?
All right, and the motion is to limit the discussion to 15 minutes. It's been presented, it's been seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Abstain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we're good. Mr. Rosenblum?
Thank you. The Illinois Association of School Boards has a delegate assembly each year at its IIII Conference, which is taking place the weekend before Thanksgiving. As liaison to the IASB for this board, I have been delegated to be the delegate for the delegate assembly representing this body. There are five resolutions. Oh, the IASB is an advocacy group, as well as other things. But the resolutions are requests for the IASB to solicit and advocate for legislation on behalf of its members for policies at the state level. There are five resolutions, of which all board members have been provided with their copies of the online agenda, requesting the delegates to vote in favor of or against, in agreement or disagreement with the resolution and the recommendation of the resolution. We have with us the North Cook Division Resolutions Chair, Mrs. Anna Klimkowitz, who represents our district at the state level for these resolution creations and reviews. I ask that every board member review the five resolutions that are being recommended for delegate voting at the upcoming assembly and come prepared next month during our board meeting, either with the new resolutions form that you have been presented, with your request on how this school district is voted at the delegate assembly and how I will vote on behalf of this board. And I will, as in previous years, vote with whatever the majority of this board so chooses, either in agreement or disagreement with the resolutions. If you have any questions regarding any of these resolutions, I ask you to please contact me between now and the next board meeting, and we can discuss it. Or we can discuss it during the board meeting, at which point I will be asking you to collect these pieces of paper that show what your preferred vote would be. Or if you prefer not to do it on paper and prefer to do it in a vocal perspective, I would be happy to solicit that at that time. Are there any questions?
Okay, that's pretty clear. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenblum. All right, that will take us then to, the next item is the school year calendar, 2025, 2026, and summer school calendar 2026. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the school calendar for the 2025, 2026 school year and the summer school 2026. May I have a motion, please?
It's removed.
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Small?
Each year, the district adopts a school calendar. By providing the school calendars years in advance, the district can give notice to students, parents, and staff members as they plan their personal and professional obligations. Consistent with the school code, the 25-26 calendar provides an 184-day school year of 180 instructional days and four institute days. The 180 instructional days have four extra school days compared to what is required by law. These four extra days allow for up to four emergency weather days to be taken without the need for online learning or adding additional days at the end of a calendar year. Therefore, District 211 still has the traditional snow days as needed. The proposed 2026 school, summer school calendar provides for 26 days of instruction across two semesters.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, any questions?
Just, we're starting school August 11th. I mean, that is, that is really early. I think, you know, I understand the four snow days, if we use them. I would almost rather see an August 18th start, where students get one more year of, or one more week of summer and the utilization of the online classes to make up with that if we needed to. I think that taking another week in August from students that could use some more time off for their mental health, considering we have mental health days that are implemented by law, and we could give them another week in August, I would rather lean that way. That's my position on that.
Any other comments or questions?
I will say that it's, so it's interesting, on 2024, I'm thinking of, now, I know that we have two elementary feeder districts, of course. We have 54. And, you know, I don't have any knowledge of what their calendar is off the top of my head. But my children attend District 15, our other feeder district. I work in District 15. I work in District 15. District 15 has been sort of an outlier in our area in that they start around this date every year. They always start pretty early. And this year, our date, I think, was not dissimilar to the 12th. And, I mean, so it does feel, it feels very early. And I know that next year, District 15 is an outlier because of the construction that they're hoping to do in the summer. It's one late year, then they'll return back. So on the one hand, I certainly agree with Mr. Dombrowski in that sense. On the other hand, if these changes were to go forward, I know at least for District 15, families with students attending both District 15 and District 211 would have start dates that are actually closer together than they've historically been in the past.
In the past, District 211, and I don't know the date off the top of my head, used to start later and went into June. The academic challenge behind that, which is the emphasis and the reason behind the change of our calendar, is that Semester One ended shortly after winter break. So what we did is we had our students end their, their December schooling, go on a two-week winter break, come back, and within 10, 15 days, be taking a final exam after a two-week winter break. So the whole shift of this calendar was to put final exams prior to winter break and actually give the students a true winter break, not where they were working on projects, not where they were preparing for final exams, but an actual break in Semester One. Their grades were done before they started Semester Two afterwards. In order to do that, that pushes our calendar start a little bit earlier.
Thank you for the, the update and the rationale that's been behind that. Any other questions?
First of all, I appreciate the continued, I'll call it forethought or forecasting of the school year to help families with their, their planning of activities as well. I would like to again reiterate the importance of not only this calendar, but the scheduling within that calendar of school activities, meetings, programs, tests, et cetera, within our, our, our programs that could impact the demographics of our students from a religious and ethical, and ethical, and ethnical perspective to try to avoid as much as possible any conflicts that our students or staff may have that make them have to choose between their faith or their ethnic values and our programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
One more thing, I'm not, I'm not seeing the calendar election days. Will we still host voting sites? And will operate on the same, same time?
The, currently, the, what the next agenda item is addressing that. So we have school on election dates unless the legislators decide that we will not have school, which is a change to our 24-25 calendar.
Okay, any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The next item is an action item that the Board of Education approves the revised school calendar for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Dr. Small?
Calendar that's before you was approved by the board in 2022, and at that time, it was aligned with the Illinois School Code. However, during the spring 2023 Illinois Legislative Session, the new requirement is that there is the addition of the holiday called the 2024 Election Day. This state holiday has forced us to revise this calendar. The revision is shown to you here. We will be shifting an institute day to August, having no school on the new holiday called the Election Day Holiday. And then we will take a institute day and make it a attendance day in October. I want to make, be very clear about this. This is not for next month, this is for November 2024.
Any questions? All right, there are none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education approves participation in foreign exchange trips as proposed for the summer of 2024. District 211 reserves the right to cancel any travel that the district deems unsafe or to not be in the best interest of District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to reiterate that even though parents can get travel insurance, if the district cancels outside of the window for reimbursement in the insurance, they may not necessarily be protected by their travel insurance. So there, there is still risk that the district can make a decision, and the insurance would not cover it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Anna Klimkowitz to attend the North Cook Division Dinner Meeting on October 30th, 2023, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is potential topics for future discussion. All right, next is the committee reports. NSSEO, I passed out to you an information sheet, what you need to know about NSSEO and their school-based Medicaid services. This is from the business manager, Julie Jellic. She put this together. It's important to understand about all of the billing that's involved and IDEA funds that are able to come back into the schools, into NSSEO, and things that we also do here at, at our district. So, you know, please read that at your leisure, and if you have any questions, I will certainly try to answer that for you. At NSSEO, we've always had our shining stars. And our new superintendent, Dr. Meg Schnorr, would like to also take a look at the shooting stars. So we recognize some kids that had completed NSSEO, whether they were at Timber Ridge, or Kirk, or Minor School, any of those. And we did recognize two young people that are going off to, to Harper, to Harper College, and on to, you know, some different careers and some vocational training, and some careers, the one young man, he's going to be pursuing a career in, in welding, which, you know, is, is really great for him. And those are the kind of things, you know, there's, there's jobs, there's all sorts of opportunities. So we're going to recognize the, the shooting stars and kind of take a look and see where our kids have gone to. Also took a look at the 10-year life safety. And what NSSEO has done is we really did an in-depth look at the facilities. We're getting information on that and what needs to be done. They took a look at the, the life safety, trying to break it down into what's a priority A, what's urgent, what's required, what's recommended, and then also at some point, taking a look at what is this going to cost and what we need, what needs to be done first. Also to let you know that the number of students continue to increase. Minor school, we just had an increase of a few more students. Staffing is going fairly well. There's still some positions that are open, and they're continuing to, to work with, you know, recruiting the, the staff that is needed. Also took a look at the school safety plan. And as you're dealing with the special needs students, it's really important to have the, a plan that covers, you know, a number of areas, the physical safety and security, mental health and well-being, also looking at the culture and climate of the community, and how do you operate if there's, you know, some emergencies? So they did take a look at some district-wide plans, and they are updating theirs, and they're aligning it with a program called I Love You Guys. It's a response protocol that's endorsed by the Arlington Heights Police Department, and it's adopted by several of the NSSEO districts. And when they take a look at that, and I, I didn't make copies of this for you, but it, the action plan has some caricatures here. So it's easy to kind of understand where you hold, stay in your room, where you need to secure, if there's a lockdown, if you need to evacuate, if you need to shelter. So these are some of the graphics that they're going to be sharing with the students to make sure that they're aware of what needs to be done in regards to safety. They're also looking to work with a program called the Crisis Go app, and they will have a NSSEO parent information center. So parents will be made aware of all of these things that the kids are going to be taught, they're going to work with the staff, make them aware of it. And the entire goal is safety for all of our students and for the, for the staff. And that is it for NSSEO. So that'll take us to EdRed.
Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. So Dr. Small, Mrs. Hummel, and I attended the annual kickoff luncheon on October 6th. At that luncheon, Eric Santos, the Regional Educational Technology Coordinator for the Learning Technology Center, led a presentation and discussion on AI in education, and it was very educational. He even gave us demonstrations of how it can be used in an educational setting. For anyone on the board interested in learning more about AI in schools, the Learning Technology Center will be hosting a conference on November 1st through 3rd with an AI summit on the first day and an AI policy panel for school leaders on the second day. More information about that is available on the EdRed site through your member, your member login. EdRed is, has several working committees. I almost hate to talk about committees right now, but working committees, advocacy committees, and quarterly committees, and is seeking volunteers to participate on them. If you're interested in learning more about them or expressing interest to participate, please let me know, and I'd be happy to discuss what those committees are and how you might be able to join them. The next meeting will be November 3rd, when someone from FranZic will be providing updates on legislation regarding TIF reform, property taxes, and more. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Booster Club report. Mr. Bradley?
Yes, thank you. So I had the pleasure of attending our first Booster Club meeting this year. And I have to say, we had representation from every school, so I was really impressed. In some, in some schools, we had double representation. So the parents there are doing a very good job in raising funds for the students for various activities, and I just look forward from them having a bright future with the Booster Club.
Thank you.
And I want to mention that I saw on Facebook, or maybe it was Twitter, I think it was Twitter, that 211 posted promotional item on all of the boosters at each of the schools, encouraging people in the community that would be interested to join them. So I thought that was excellent publicity as well.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Community and Family Services report. Ms. Barron?
Yeah, so the Palatine Rotary had a meeting this past Tuesday. I wasn't able to attend, but our Director of Summer School and Community Outreach, Mrs. Silver, attended that meeting, so she sent over some notes, which I'm so thankful for. Journey, Bid for Hope, benefit, they're hosting a gala, benefit gala, on November 10th at 6:30 PM at the Coalition Banquet in Palatine. And then they're also Special Leisure Services Foundation, Recreation for Children and Adults with Disabilities. It's also hosting a gala on Friday, November 3rd at 6:30 PM at the Chevy Chase Banquet in Lillie. And then they are also going to be discussing some volunteer opportunities coming up at their next meeting. And their next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday from 7:15 to 8:45 AM. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, then that takes us to the District 211 Foundation Report. I was not able to attend, but I know that the good news is the foundation had received a $75,000 donation. And the donation will support activities such as student visits with their parents to four-year anniversaries, hiring outside companies for ACT and other admittance test preparations, and making certain students have correct dress for college campus visits and, and interviews.
And that was the Project Excel program at Palatine High School.
Okay, for the Project Excel. Also, they talked a little bit about the, the golf fundraiser.
The Realtors Against Homelessness had a wonderful fundraiser for District 211. We don't have the final numbers yet, but it was a great time and a lot of good people there that donated some money to our district.
Okay, it's really a great program, and it's really wonderful for what the Realtors do and how they help, you know, each of our schools and the students there. So those, those little extras are, are just amazing. All right, then that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Boards report. Anything further, Mr. Rosenblum?
I do. First of all, the North Cook Division meeting is being held on October 30th. Mrs. Klimkowitz and I will be attending from this board. And, and the state superintendent, Tony Sanders, will be the keynote speaker. And I'm fairly confident that we will have a couple of senior administrators from our district in attendance as well. And I have something very special, and that is to share with everyone that since her election to the District 211 Board of Education in 1997, Mrs. Anna Klimkowitz has contributed to our community and schools as a resident, parent, and leader. She has been recognized as a master school board member and is currently Resolutions Chair for the North Cook Division of IASB. Mrs. Klimkowitz also serves as board liaison to District 211 Foundation and NSSEO, as we heard this evening. Due to her continued involvement in support of our district, students, and community in the boardroom and beyond, it is my pleasure to present Anna Klimkowitz with an annual merit recognition certificate and award as a board leader through the Board Leader Recognition Program of IASB. Congratulations, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
All right, thank you. That's, you know, this is very humbling. I, I enjoy being here with, you know, all of you wonderful people and our audience who stay, so, but thank you. That's just very humbling. All right, that will take us then to our upcoming events. You've got that. Our next board meeting is going to be November 9th. And the next recommended action is going back into closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, security procedures, school building, safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, respond to an actual, a threatened or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries.
The recommended action is that the board return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Mary Flowers, previously approved by the Board of Education on June 16, 2022, effective December 2023. instead of May 2025, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Ronald Izzo, effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff Union. And Rebecca Watts, effective May 2027, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell, aye. Mrs. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education approve the Resolution Authorizing Settlement of the Vaping Litigation with Altria Group Inc. and related parties.